Good afternoon, everyone. We actually stand for our invocation and call on our city council meeting to order. Can we all bow our heads, please? Father, we just thank you today for this opportunity to stand before your presence. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom and understanding. We can make decisions that will benefit all of the Leesburg residents and visitors. We thank you, God, for the young people who are here tonight for the great accomplishments. Thank you for our staff, our city manager, our city council. We honor you tonight for the great things that you're doing in our lives and our future. Pray for every business owner, city of Leesburg. We pray for prosperity. We pray for good health for our residents. We thank you for what you've allowed us to see and accomplish here in the great city. Thank you for the troops around the world that are fighting for our freedoms. Thank you for our president, our governor, our county officials, and most of all, we thank you for life, health and strength. At Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we ought to have a proclamation
Yes, sir.
To the Leesburg High School girls weightlifting team.
Let's do some more information in case you want.
Okay. From the office of the mayor of the city of Leesburg, where the city of Leesburg wishes to congratulate the Leesburg High School Lady Lifters, Girls Weightlifting Team, on their outstanding performances throughout the historic 2018-2019 season. Whereas the LHS Lady Lifters are led by Coach Josh Boyer and Assistant Coach Luke Freeze, and over the last 11 years have won six district team titles, five district team runner-up titles, one regional team championship, one regional team runner-up title, have produced 32 state qualifying lifters, and brought home 14 state medals. Whereas through hard work and perseverance to 2018 to the 19, Lady Lifters earned second place finishing in the FHSAA Class 1A State Weightlifting Championships, the best ever for a Lake County school. Whereas the 2018 to the 19 FHSAA Class 1A State Championship, meet Haley Zekos placed fourth, Taylor Woods placed second, and Crystal Howson and Yasmin Heflin each placed first in their individual weight classes, with Crystal Howson and Yasmin Heflin being the first state champions in Lake County schools history. And whereas while the sport of weightlifting is in many aspects an individual effort, team spirit and support is an integral part of each little success, and the members of the 2018-19 LHS Lady Lifters teams are as follows. If you ladies here, if you would stand when I call your names, we can recognize you and know who you are. Crystal Howson. Jasmine Ramjet. Right here. Courtney Bracco. Lazier Arche Gina. Right now here. Cheyenne Dabney. Nicole Summer Sumner. Haley Zekos. Victoria Brummett. Taylor Woods. Stephanie Widows. Taj Newkirk. Samantha Futch. Taylor Kent. Hannah Harris. Faith Garrison. Tina Bates. Zamoni Lamar. Jocelyn Martin. Georgina Shork. Kendi Tindell. Amane Williams. Tori Douso. Last but not least, I forgot, didn't forget, but this young lady, I knew her since she was a little girl. She's been a member of my church for so many years. She was shy, quiet, and we were all amazed that she's a state champion in weightlifting, Ms. Yasmin Heflin. Now therefore, our John Christian Mayor of the city of Leesburg do hereby proclaim the exemplary sportsmanship and outstanding athletic accomplishments of the 2018-19 Leesburg High School Lady Lifters Girl Weightlifting Team, and urge all citizens of Leesburg to applaud their achievement and wish them continued success in upcoming years. Go Jackets! Is the coach here? Coach? Come get a team picture with all the teams and all your medals. I'm sure Commissioner Dennison is probably buzzing up with pride.
I am.
I mean, all of you right here, y'all be lady lifters. Y'all come and just stay here, take a picture. Just gonna stand with me, D1 for ladies.
Sure.
We're gonna let the coach come to the podium and say, "If you were riding by this
We're gonna let the coach come to the podium and say, "If you were riding by this team." Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't expecting to be put on the spot like this or have to say anything, but let's see what I can do. Thank you. First and foremost, it is difficult to keep kids engaged and excited about a sport that gets a little bit of love, so by you guys recognizing us, it's truly, truly appreciated. These girls, and I know because I've coached several sports at Leesburg High School, I've dealt with many athletes, and their dedication and the work that they put in is truly, truly hard work. They are exemplary student athletes, and these young ladies deserve all the recognition. It is easy to coach when you have kids that actually want to do it and want to be great. And we have an outstanding group of young ladies that want that, so all the credit goes to them. They're great, they're fun to work with, for the most part, by and large. They come every single day, wired tight, ready to go mentally, physically. They know the rules of the weight room, they leave their baggage at the door, and everything from the outside world gets left at the door, they come in, they get their training done. They're meticulous in the way that they train and the way that they approach each training session, and obviously, those qualities played a huge hand in the season that we had this year. So this was the best weightlifting season that any Leesburg, or not Leesburg, but Lake County team has had, boys or girls, weightlifting. Nobody's ever finished state runner-up. We lost the state championship by one point, and that is a fuel to the fire that is gonna drive me crazy until next February. So, thank you, and if there's nothing else, then I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Coach. And ladies, I know if you got to leave, you can leave, but I just want you to come because so often we hear so many negative things about Leesburg High School, but I wanted the commission, the city, to know that we have some great young people at Leesburg High School who are doing marvelous and spectacular things, so I'm proud of each of you, and the trip to Fort Walton Beach, and so it was a long trip, but they came and I think they did very well, so I'm proud of all you that worked hard and put the extra time in, so congratulations once again. Item three is a presentation we're gonna ask for September 30 of 2018, CAF review by MSL. Mr. Williams?
Jim Williams, Finance Director. I'd like to welcome Joel Knopp, his partner with Moore Stevens and Lovelace, our auditors, and I want to thank our accounting staff led by Carl Plezner. It's been a good year so far, and he's gonna give you the results.
All right, good evening, Mayor Christian and members of the city commission. It's a pleasure to be here and present the highlights of the audit for the fiscal year to September 30, 2018. And we'll say the cities that be commended, you all are actually the first presentation of our busy season in that you're one of the first, or the first city that I'm working with that's issued their financial statements, and that timely financial reporting really speaks to the great job that your staff does on being organized and prepared for the audit. So, I have a few slides to go through. First one being require communications, and there was a letter as part of the agenda, so I won't go into the details of it, but the main emphasis of that is it points out our auditor responsibilities, which are to audit in accordance with government audit standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and also communicate any issues that we may have had with, in dealing with management or completing the audit, and I'm pleased to report that the audit ran very smooth and we got full cooperation from staff. As far as our audit reports, you'll find those on respective pages listed in the slide here. Our opinion on the financial statements, you'll find on pages 14 to 15, and that was an unmodified opinion. There was one emphasis of matter paragraph added this year for the implementation of a new accounting standard, which I'll discuss in a bit. The next report is on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance, and I'm pleased to report there are no findings noted and no compliance findings noted as it relates to the audit. The independent accountants report you'll find on page 209, this deals with the city's compliance with its investment policies. Again, no non-compliance noted there, and then the auditor general management letter is also accompanying in the financial statements, and there were no issues noted in the financial operations or compliance areas there as well. As far as financial highlights, I did wanna just briefly touch on the new accounting standard that was implemented. This was related to the city's long-term liability for retiree healthcare benefits, and it's called other post-employment benefits. We shortened it to OPEB for convenience sake, but it was an unfunded liability of the city, meaning there was no corresponding asset to record to offset this liability. It was one of the, what we believe and hope to be the last real significant accounting change for governments to complete their full accrual balance sheet. So now, the statement of net position for the city reports all long-term assets, so all the capital assets of the city, as well as all the long-term liabilities, and that includes your debt, pension, and now this OPEB liability. This standard did require a restatement of the beginning net position. It had no impact, though, on the general fund balance, since the general fund is reported on what's called a modified accrual, so a more short-term focus. The impact of the restatement on the net position was an $11 million decrease for the governmental activities and a $5.5 million decrease for the business-type activities. Just to show you the results again, this is on the full accrual presentation for the citywide analysis, so this is again looking at the long-term numbers for the city, and you'll see the unrestricted net position was $5.5 million, and for governmental activities, if you recall, that's after an $11 million decrease for this restatement, so to end up in the positive is still a very healthy position for the city even after incorporating this new significant liability into the financial statements. The change in net position for the year for 2018 was a positive $11.7 million. Now I refer you to the general fund slide, and again, the main, or the key financial indicator is in the unassigned fund balance, and you see that that increased to $14.4 million from $10.9 million, and that represents 48.2% of total expenditures and transfers out for the year. So with that positive $2.4 million, the general fund had a very positive financial result. A big piece of that increase was related to the sale of the communication utility and the corresponding transfer into the general fund of approximately $5 million. So that definitely played a part in this positive result for the general fund, but it definitely puts you in a very healthy position at the end of the fiscal year. And the last slide is dealing with the budget, just to give you a picture of how the city's results compared to the final approved budget. You can see the revenues and transfers in were $6.1 million to the positive over the projected budget. Again, a significant piece was the transfer from the communication utility. And then in the expenditures and transfers out, the city is also to the good in the amount of $1.5 million, as you spent less than budgeted. So the net results, again, were the positive $2.4 million for the year and a $7.6 million positive variance compared to your final budget. So again, very good results for the city for fiscal year 18, and that's despite that incorporation of the new liability, as I mentioned. I would again like to express my appreciation to the city staff, and you really have an excellent financial team as it relates to their record-keeping and financial reporting competency, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Any question on the commission?
So Al, on the retiree, are we gonna discuss that in budget?
I don't, I just, I don't think that that Gadsby rule is something we need to concern ourselves with. I think it's kinda over-redundant, and that increases our funding where we gotta be 100%, something like that.
Well, it actually doesn't do anything to your funding. It's really just a balance sheet presentation and on the full accrual level, so it doesn't really impact your general fund budgeting process at this point.
Unless you wanted to fund that, I mean, it's something we can talk about. I don't think I would be putting $11 million into that fund, though.
I would think on the other side is get more contribution.
It's from retirees. I brought that up a couple times. It's a very easy fix, and it's to quit paying premiums for people when they're on Medicare, but we let them have our insurance too, but I brought that up a few times. That's a really quick way to shrink it.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir, for your work with the city of Leesburg. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item four is our consent agenda routines. Items are placed on the consent agenda's expeditive meeting. Commissioner's staff, we should discuss any item. The procedures as follows. Pull the items from the consent agenda, vote on remaining items with one roll call vote, discuss each item pulled, and vote by roll call. Are there any items the commission would like to pull?
Four, five. And then five.
A, B, and C.
We want five B. Five A, B, C.
A, B...
There's three of them.
So there's, it's gonna be B, five.
Five B.
The execution of time, material, service, and for electricians, am I on the right one?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
So you want four, two?
There's three of them.
You want four, two, or just five?
Just five, I'm sorry.
Any other items to be pulled tonight?
Is that all three of them?
A, B, and C.
All three?
Motion to approve the remaining items?
Show move. Second.
Motion, proper move to approve the remaining items. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five, A is a resolution, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, ask you to get back.
Resolution of a city commission of a city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an electrical services agreement on a time and material basis with Prime Electric LLC for electrical contractor services on an as-needed basis and providing an effective date.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to proper second. Discussion, commission?
Yeah, the reason, I just had brought this one up because I'm trying to pull up the notes on this, give me just a minute. We have, the way it's looking is there's three different companies that we're gonna rotate through. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how are we going to, being that they're all different price structures, how are we going to rotate that and ensure one's not being, if we're gonna do three, I mean, I don't...
It's not atypical for us. We do this with some of our other contracts too, we just keep a rotation going.
Let me, like, could we just say?
We'll start with...
And I'm answering questions I've been asked that I don't have to answer, so I need more, just that's what we do.
We'll start with company A, then we'll do company B, then we'll do company C, just rotate it.
It just rotates here and there, job through?
And if company A says they can't do it, we'll go to company B, A, B, C, we'll just keep rotating it.
Just keep rotating it around. And then we go through, like, I know we had a pretty stiff qualification deal, I mean, are all of them in that same thing as far as who's got?
Yep, all of these are qualified licensed contractors. They're all ready to go.
So we're all good.
Any other commission question? Comments? Comments from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five B is also a resolution, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, ask you to rub a title or not be read.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion from the commission, from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five C is also a resolution, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, ask you to rub a title or not be read.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Move to proper second. Any discussion from the commission, from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Public hearings, non-routine items. Three is, A is a resolution to execute, have a motion to introduce it?
I'll introduce.
Resolution of a city commission of a city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment five to an existing construction services agreement with Evergreen Construction Management, Inc., for services related to the new community building for an amount of $3,255,695 and providing an effective date.
A motion?
Move to approve. Just as a...
Do we have a second?
Is there a second? I thought you had a second.
No, but a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have DC Model and Mark Starcher here, they can fill you in on any details. Essentially, this is the last change order. I don't know, change order's probably not the correct word, but as you know, in this project, we did the construction manager at risk project. We started construction before the plans were at 100% architectural completion, and we went through some modifications, and at the end of the day, this looks, this is hopefully our firm price, about $9.6 million to finish off. That number is about $1 million more than what we thought, and it had a couple adders in there too. So what we're recommending is to approve the change order, which will create a construction budget of just a little under $9.3 million, or nine points, it's about $9,668,172. That also includes furniture budget of $100,000, an IT budget of $100,000, a signage budget of $75,000, and a fence budget, which creates decorative fence going down Dixie to complete the corridor. Embedded in that number as well, which we didn't include, is the bridge. We kinda were going separate on the bridge project, so there's $165,000 in there to complete the bridge. If you recall, the bridge is a decorative bridge that will go from the community center patio out to Martin Luther King Island. If you look on page two of the agenda transmittal, the bad news is it's a little more expensive than we thought. The good news is, I think we put together a pretty solid financial plan on shifting around projects so that you don't use reserve monies and you get the project done, and it's still a pay-as-you-go type project. And so the list out there is about $230,000 in rollover projects in English. That means projects that are completed, that we had leftover money from this fiscal year that we're shifting over, so we collected about $230,000 there. And then we had some fiscal year 19 projects, which we're recommending either we cancel or we'll just reprogram into fiscal year 20. So after those transactions are completed, we put together about $1.5 million of funds that we can shift around to cover and get this project done. That's kinda the issue on a high scope. If you want more details, we can delve into it. My hope is that obviously you approve the change order from a financial standpoint on the project. Once you approve this project, this is really the last time financially this would hit the commission unless something goes astray and we have a significant change. We don't anticipate that, I can't guarantee that. We feel very good, we increased some of the contingencies in that $9.6 million, and I feel good with the number, so, and it's gonna be barring something really catastrophic that I think that that number would change. I do anticipate we'll be back to you, assuming you approve this, to talk about naming the facility and doing some minor things that won't affect the budget, but this is where the project stands.
Any comments? I think my comment said it before, I would like to see us, the audio visual, someone professionally come in and give us a nice sound and nice visual. The worst thing for me is to be in a banquet and you got feedback and you got terrible sound, so I don't think $35,000 is gonna be...
No, it's 100. I increased that IT number to 100 over here.
Okay, IT sound, okay, good, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. That's the worst thing for me, and my church is doing some stuff now, and I think $35,000 not gonna get us where we need to be, so thanks for listening. Any comments from the public?
On the bridge, are you saying the 250, and then there's another 100 and something on top of that for the bridge?
I don't, the bridge, the bridge construction estimate contingent to the maximum guaranteed price from Evergreen is $165,000. That's embedded in that 9.66 number.
But I'm asking, what's the 250 on the bridge?
That was just the budget number.
Where, okay, that was, yeah, that was a budget number that we put together to come up with the 7.8.
And it had that being...
But that seven, this is confusing. We were estimating that the bridge was gonna cost $250,000. That's how we came up with the 7.8 as a budgeted project. That number never, the 250 bridge number never became embedded in the Evergreen contract. We were doing it as two separate projects. So while we got this number, to keep it easy and clean, we instructed Evergreen to roll them all together. So even though we had it in as a revenue number, we didn't have it in as a construction number. Now it's in.
And are we, what are we doing with the other bridge? Will it remain as well?
We talked about that in the past. I think your recommendation was to keep both bridges. I think that's something we talk about as we get down to construction.
Mark, can you come and say something? This $3 million, can you just come say something to us and update us?
Glad to, sir.
Thank you, sir. This is a guy who's responsible how it's gonna look, and that number's coming in a little smaller than this.
The architect service. They played a big role in how it looks, and we'll hear input, of course, but we're responsible for on-time, on-budget.
Okay.
Quality of work, so, is there any specific questions I can address?
Any questions for the commission? Jay got it, thank you.
All I would say, I would just, the process and change orders and these things, and so let's just review that for a second, because we, this is the second time that we've used the... the construction manager at risk forum, and so what we're seeing is just a different process. So what I would say to hold myself and Mr. Starcher to on-time, on-budget is this number. So this is the ruler, 9.66.
This creates the final guarantee.
This is, this is the number, and the date is October 28th, that's also, I think, in the contract. So how do we get to that number? Generally, what we've seen through processes is a design, build, bid process. We design a project 100%, then that goes out, and we bid it, we get a number back, and then the contractor starts working on it. Sometimes there's a disconnect in that, and I think there's a big disconnect that we see in that process, on this process. We used a construction manager at risk process, so this process goes where we started design process, and by halfway through the design process, we inject the contractor into that process to have feedback on cost options, how we change things, and as we finish off this design, we start coming up with a price of the project as we finish design. Here's why that's big. If we had gone down the road with this one as a design bid build, we would have built a major facility with the epicor roof, with the clear story all the way up, with major architectural features that were really grandiose. But when that would have hit the marketplace, we would have seen budget numbers skyrocket. And then as we got into construction, there's, there would be the disconnect between contractor and architect with little changes as we go, which hits change orders. And so you would have, I think you would have seen increased costs, and then you would have seen change orders on top of that. What the construction manager at risk project did was, we identified the, where the vision and the contracting doesn't match, and so case in point, we are, we scaled back that building before we bid it out, okay? And even in that scale back, we still saw cost increase, steel, concrete, Mark can probably give you the rundown. And so when you see this list of change orders now, this is kind of the change orders we would have gone into with construction. So at the end, I feel pretty comfortable that we have a good project. This is the benchmark now, we've said it's going to be a rolling bar until we get to the final construction agreement, and that's where we're at. So the bad news is, it was a little more than what we thought. The good news is, we're shifting around financial blocks, shifting around projects, it's still a pay-as-you-go project, and fiscal year 20 is still open, you haven't touched cash reserves other than what we planned, and so it's still an affordable project, and we're getting it done.
So if I hear you correctly, and I believe this is what you just said, on time and on budget, so that doesn't mean that you have to go up to that maximum budget, it would be nice if you were able to do that and save us some money.
That's typically the outcome, it just typically comes in a less than guaranteed maximum price, and the factors that would determine how far below guaranteed maximum price we are are, a lot of it has to do with undefined design issues that we find during the course of construction, and the other factor is some of the aggressive nature of some subcontractors, which we try to vet out, requesting change orders throughout the project. Now, we spend a lot of time upfront on the front end with our team to go through subcontractors' quotes extremely thoroughly, make sure that we have the entire scope covered compared to what's in the drawings and specifications, and we make sure that when a subcontractor is awarded the scope of work, that they're fully vetted, that all opportunities for undefined scope are cleared up, and that we have a contract that is as well as qualified price, that brings the caliber of their approach to bear in that. So we feel like we've got a team of the best value and the best quality for the money in terms of subcontractors.
Okay, so they would be doing this on time and at budget?
And it's our, it's our obligation to lead that seamless subcontractors to that result.
You're not going to say yes, are you?
Okay, stay in question, I will absolutely say yes, I may understand the question, but on time, on budget, yes.
Commissioner Robach?
I would need to be ahead of time and ahead of budget.
Did, did this number, did this include the, I think it was a building envelope consultant that was going to look at the windows?
Yeah, we have a contingency in there, we are going to contribute the cost of that consultant to the project, it's going to come out of our general conditions or fee or for, it's going to come out of our budget, that is non-reversible. So we're going to contribute that to the project, and then any changes they find to the building envelope that will require additional cost can easily come out contingency, and we don't see that that being a big number, but we think whatever it does cost will return itself many times in terms of the durability and the performance of the building, especially when it comes to keeping water out building.
So mind you, there's a 260,000 contingency that's built into this 9.66 total budget, so we've got a couple of bucks there to wiggle worth.
Yeah, I brought that up because I think this is a big benefit to doing the design-build process, is a lot of times architects design stuff that are very pretty, but they don't always work so well, so when we have the builder involved, they can look at those things and make sure that it's right, and we don't have water leaks down the road, so just want to make sure that was there, thank you.
With this, with this process, we can identify the weaknesses of the building envelope in terms of keeping water out, and mitigate them before they are built.
Absolutely, thank you.
There's only two points for me, and not trying, we're not trying to be funny when we ask these questions about time and budget, because every single project that we've ever done, obviously, has had change orders because there's unforeseen, and we understand that.
Right.
The very first one we've ever had over 3 million, but it's a huge project, and we understand, of course. I think for me, I'm just voicing again, an agreement with the other commissioners, how important it is that this is done on time, you know, we had a July 4th, and we're now four full months behind that, but November 1st creates a whole vast variety of problems for people who need to use that in our community, and we lost it this year because we've already been in construction, so, you know, I hope you go from guiding to pushing, if necessary, to make sure that we're on time with this project. The one thing I wanted to ask you, if you would, just because in the past, there's been so much said concerning, you know, we should have remodeled the old building for 3 million and all that kind of stuff, and that was an option that we had. But if you wouldn't mind elaborating just a little for the public to know, that once you actually got in on the old community center to tear it down, then it came very clear that that never would have been a possibility, is that correct?
That, that's, that would be my opinion. Now, I don't have the background of the feasibility study that was done, you know, on the original building, but I can tell you from observations and experience, I can list a whole host of items that would not accommodate the project in today's standards, such as the roof height being too low, the foundations not being sized big enough, the structural integrity of the building, which would not handle hurricane-force wind loads like the new one will. You know, I can go on and on, it would not accommodate the kind of HVAC system you would have today, the daylighting wouldn't be there in terms of the amount of square footage of glass. Design-wise, you are very limited, and you would not have a functional building the way that the new building would function, and you would be very limited in what you could do with it. You could make it look nice, but it would never function the way you need it to function. And that's, that's kind of the short answer. If you want more detail than that, we can, we can go on and on, but the fact is, a building of that type just cannot service the type of functions and the type of needs you're going to have today.
Yeah, and I just, I know too, just by the conversation, that, you know, there was a lot of the things that if we would have went down that road, we wouldn't have even been able, I'll get it out here in the moon, we would not have even been able to do, because it couldn't hold the load and things like that. So I just wanted to do that to make everybody feel like we, we actually did make the right choice, and to, you know, re-solidify that doing the new building was definitely the best option for the money.
Commissioner Peterson?
I just had one question, I'm new to the commission, and I guess new to how government operates sometimes. This, this contract, this process, is it done this way in the private sector as well today?
Absolutely, in fact, 90% of the projects we do, at least, are done through the construction manager at risk model. That's the government's, local government, or the government's term for the process. In the private sector, we call it negotiated with a guaranteed maximum price. So it's the same process, it's actually the same type of contract, you know, every, every project we do has a little different nuance to the contract, but it's the same boilerplate contract with some modifications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mark, appreciate it, man.
Thank you, Mayor.
Look forward to a wonderful building.
And appreciate the opportunity to do this for you.
Yes, sir.
Glad to hear it's on time, it's great.
Mr. Luckage?
Don Luckage, I'd just like to ask one question, what is the current cost of the new community center with all the amendments?
9.6, 9.66 million is the total price, that includes the building, all the landscaping, the furnishing, and signage, and a few other add-ons, 9.66.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Roll call please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes. Oh, I have to stand, yeah, sorry.
You want to build it, though.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
And 5B is also a second reading, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce an ass to your title only.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the zoning on approximately 72.81 plus-minus acres to allow for industrial uses in a PUD, planned unit development, zoning for a property generally located north of Griffin Road, west of Thomas Avenue, and east of County Road 468, as legally described in section 16 and 21, township 19 South, range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to proper second, any discussion from the commission, from the public? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
And 5C is a second reading, someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the zoning on approximately 0.165 plus-minus acres in a C2 community commercial zoning district to add a PDO planned development overlay for a property generally located east of South Street, south of West Magnolia Street, and north of West Dixie Avenue, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Move a second.
Second.
Move to proper second, discussion from the commission?
Was anything done since the last reading about the parking?
Dan Miller, planning and zoning, under section 7C, we added some wording to address the parking issue, which would require a prior certificate of occupancy, that adequate parking through either a by-site plan or a written parking agreement would be required.
Thank you.
Dan, I know they're trying to get open by Bike Week, is that the whole project, or?
I don't think you're going to be able to do the entire project by Bike Week. Do you, John?
I'm sorry, let's, sir.
I don't, I don't believe we'll be able to get the entire project done by Bike Week, but it'd be able to do some-
No, we're hoping to.
But, Mr. John, you got to come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I didn't see you sitting back there, sorry.
I'm here.
I don't think we'll have the whole project done by then, we're hoping to be at a point where we can at least get a operational permit, at least for those three or four days, to open for Bike Fest, and take advantage of that, and then move forward after that.
Great.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Staff? All right, any public comment? Roll call please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
No information reports tonight, city attorney items?
Nothing, Mayor.
City manager items?
No matter for you this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Public comment, this section reserved for members of the public to bring matters of concern or opportunists of praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting, issue will be either referred to the proper staff or be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, please. Any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sherry O'Brien, and I was here last year in March with a group from our community, Arlington Ridge Community, and I wanted to do basically an update with all of you. A year has gone by, and nothing has changed at GI Shavings as far as their operation. Just a brief recap for you, our HOA participated in talks with GI Shavings management, they thought there was progress being made, but the talks broke down. So from May until September, they were doing these talks. After it broke down, the HOA, on behalf of all the residents in our community, put together a petition. That proceeded into January, well, originally it was scheduled for December, but in January, we had two days of hearings with an administrative law judge. Our HOA lawyer spent hours preparing for this, we had the Department of Environmental Health, their lawyer were there, and the GI lawyer and company representatives. The reason that we had this administrative hearing was to stop the permit that GI Shavings was going after, and at this point, it is on hold until we hear a ruling from the law judge. The permit that they're asking for is no restrictions, operate seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and remove the restrictions of the wind, because there was a restriction which they've been in violation. We've had air, the particulates, the smoke, the odor, as well as the noise. So at this point, they're still operating under their old permit. I've asked the question, on behalf of our residents, about the permit, it is considered a construction permit. I've asked how many years can a company operate on a construction permit, because they do not have what is considered an operating permit. I've not been given any clarification on the definition of those two. I know that DEP made our former government, Governor Rick Scott, aware of the issues that were going on, but nothing happened there. My question to you, as I go through this, is, has the, has the city done anything since we are in the city to assist the residents with this issue? What about the noise ordinance? The county has a noise ordinance, but they can't enforce it because we're in the city. One other thing that has been brought to my attention is that narrow strip of the heavy industrial. Each side of it is the city of Leesburg. My question is, what would it take to annex in that strip of heavy industrial, where you would better control what's going on there in relation to the residents that live in our 55-plus community? Have you had any conversations as a city with DEP? We've filed repeated violations, things that we're seeing. I've worked with both Elise Dennison, Wendy Breeden, the county code enforcement, Glenn Guzman, they've been out on the property several times, Elise has been out on the property. As far as DEP's response to us, it's always the same answer, we received your complaints, we've passed it on to our compliance team. During the course of the hearings, we did find that there had been no onsite monitoring of this company by DEP. They do drive-bys, they sit on Highway 33, roll the window down- They sit on Highway thirty-three, roll the window down, listen for a noise, try to smell something. But the company's at the back of the land, nowhere near County Road. So in our opinion, DEP is doing as little as possible and just rubber stamping any permit that comes across their desk.
Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to let the city manager try his best to answer your question, but I know Commissioner Dennison has been really working hard and been keeping the commission up to the breast of what's going on. And maybe our city manager can answer some of the questions, what the city has been doing. Our police chief is there, talk about the noise ordinance if need be, and our city attorney is here. So I'm going to let city manager Mitter try to answer some of your questions best as to us. And I know we got the television, so hopefully he can address, so the other Arlington Ridge residents can hear, so they won't need to come and pack us out.
Right. Well, and I didn't ask any of them to come with. I figured as kind of the spokesperson, I would approach and talk to the city council again.
Right. I mean, obviously, we know the issue. I think Fred's probably best to talk to some of the ordinance stuff that he advised you on, so Fred can address those in a bit. But we have had conversation with DEP. Mr. Rankin, our deputy city manager, has talked to them, Dan as well, to try to track this down. We get a lot of the same response that you do. We've talked to the county commission because part, our biggest struggle is being able to enforce an ordinance that we have no jurisdiction to enforce. So we're behind the eight ball as much as you are on that issue. Obviously, it's an outside-city limit issue. Whatever ordinance we would promulgate here really isn't going to help us create and fix a county issue. So the best that we can do at this stage is continue to prod those agencies and that other governmental body along, which is what we've done. Fred, if you want to, if you would, can you just talk a little bit? Because we did talk about some noise ordinance stuff.
Yeah, yes. I did some research on the noise ordinance, and the greater weight of authority is that a municipal noise ordinance can't be applied to a noise source outside the city limits. And that's the same with air quality and everything else. That thing is in the county's jurisdiction, and they have to deal with it. I did look at the county's ordinance, and it's kind of peculiar wrinkle in it that says they can only enforce a noise ordinance if the noise annoys somebody in unincorporated Lake County. And I emailed the county attorney and said, you know, these people inside the city are county residents too, so maybe you should amend your ordinance to take care of them. I got no response, and obviously, nobody did anything. That's probably been about a year ago, if that's how long this lady was here. So, I mean, I don't know why the county is taking a sort of a hands-off approach to these people, but they don't want to do anything. DEP has jurisdiction over the air quality. I don't know how far the plant is from thirty-three, but if the noise and the particulates are causing problems all the way over on twenty-seven, it ought to be close enough to thirty-three for DEP to see or smell something. So I don't know what they're up to. But there was an administrative proceeding, there's a law judge considering a decision. There's also a state court lawsuit that was filed unless it's been dismissed by the homeowners' association against the plant. So there are some remedies underway, and I don't know the status of those because the city's not a party to them.
To let you know that those particulates and the smell go across twenty-seven to Legacy, and we now are hearing from Plantation that it's keeping them awake at night because it's so loud and because of that smell coming through. So we've got a big area. Now, Plantation isn't Leesburg, that's the county. So the county is complaining.
Well, one of the things I suggested to the HOA lawyer when he called me before their lawsuit was filed is get somebody from the Plantation to file a complaint, and then the county can take action on it. I don't know what happened there either. But if those people are having a problem, they need to go to the county.
Okay.
And file their complaint, and they're in the county. So their complaints should trigger some noise ordinance action.
And I've got to agree with what Al said a minute ago. We all pay county taxes, whether we're physically in Leesburg or in the county. We pay big bucks to the county. What are we getting out of it?
Point was made, but not taken by the county.
So the county will have to amend their ordinance to add, not just unincorporated Lake County, but all county residents.
They would have to take the unincorporated out, any county resident annoyed by the sound.
What, you said you had, or Wendy Breeden was involved?
Yes.
Have you spoken to her, Elise?
Oh, yeah.
What does she said, speaking of county?
Quote, "The county commissioners aren't going to do anything because they're afraid G.I. Shavings will sue them because G.I. Shavings is in an industrial area."
True.
Yeah, but, but that was not an industrial operation. That was a trucking firm that was there previously. And then G.I. Shavings bought the property. There were no changes or anything else made to their, there's no operating license.
So how are they operating?
They're operating under a construction license, which should have been, after the first six months, should have been done with.
Sounds like the best thing.
And it started in twenty sixteen.
That's right. And that's when the complaints started.
We're three years off.
But they're operating there.
They're operating.
They're operating.
But I'm saying, how does any business operate under a construction license? How does that allow you to operate?
What did your attorney say about construction permit versus operating?
I never got an answer on that.
That's, I was thinking, same thing. Commissioner Robach?
Yeah, I was saying, it has always been industrially zoned. There was a, so, I mean, I get the frustration with G.I. Shavings and the fact that they're operating outside of even what they really should be allowed to do, but the developer chose to put residential lots next to industrial zoning.
But that's when it was a trucking.
But it was industrial zoning. This was a use that could have gone in there. I mean, you can't just look at what's there now, but what is the permitted use because all of that is industrial. I mean, that's part of the deal.
Well, obviously, something's seriously missing since they're still on a construction contract.
I agree. I mean, that's certainly very valid. That seems to be the big thing here.
That's what I'm most intrigued by. I'm just trying to help here, but I thought there were, I guess I thought at all levels, federal, state, county, they were cracking down on, you know, the debris, the smoke, most importantly, the odors. You know, I thought, just, I thought we'd made progress in that, but I feel your pain and frustration.
When you play golf on the back nine, when you get on hole ten through like fourteen, man, it is strong.
It's bad.
It's bad. And I live directly on hole eleven.
No good.
It's right behind my house.
Mr. O'Brien, maybe I'm going to see if, trying to reach back out to the county and see if they can adjust their ordinance again.
I just met with Glenn Guzman and Wendy Breeden with another resident on Monday of this, last week.
And I would suggest.
Or not Monday, Friday.
I would just, maybe your HOA will get with Plantation, HOA can get someone to file a complaint, and that way, that will meet the county's ordinance standard.
And then there was just one other thing I wanted to bring up, and you can look back in your records, but I did come here last year and sat in the city clerk's office and copied the developer agreement that was signed in October, on October thirteenth of two thousand and three. And number eleven says, "This agreement will be construed broadly so that, in effect, its intent is to benefit the city and the public and to regulate the property and the development for the protection of public safety, health, welfare, and convenience." And it's in the agreement that the city did with the developer. Now, the developer we have currently is a new builder. I don't even know when they first started the project, and probably none of you were on the city commission at that time. But it is in your records.
But can I say one thing, just to help? Let me make it blunt. You travel, right? You go from here to Georgia or somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay. Just trying to make it clear. A Florida state trooper cannot write you a ticket in Georgia, no matter how bad he wants to. He just can't do it. It's a jurisdiction issue. And the only thing we're trying to do is guide you because, you know, no matter what we've agreed to with anybody, the bottom line is, is if it's not inside our city, we can't do it. Just like if a Leesburg police officer sees a guy speeding out in the county, he can't write him a ticket because he's not in our city limits. So the issue is not what we want to do, not any agreements we've made with people in the city. It's something that is totally beyond any of our scope. And I don't know that, I mean, unless Fred knows something that we could file, you know, as far as any kind of lawsuit or anything with the county to force their hand in some way, but we have no authority over that company. I mean, it really, it just, and you ask, how do they annex? The property owner has to request annex. We can't force them to annex. So if they don't want to annex, then there's nothing we could do at that point. And we really, I mean, we all understand, but there's just, we have no authority, we have no power. That's the long and the short of it.
All right, Mr. O'Brien, if you would talk with our city manager, and he making point to some numbers and a little more lengthy conversation, so, but we are, we feel your pain.
Al, have you got with their city manager, I mean, the county manager?
I don't believe I've spoken with Jeff. I've spoken with Commissioner Breeden, though.
Do you think you could reach out personally and see if there's any?
We'll go back, we'll go back around the wagon again.
I, it's, I mean, the county has a noise ordinance. Even if they agreed to enforce that noise ordinance, that's not going to fix the problem because it's not noise, it's the smell and the pollution. I know we say noise, but it's industrial, it is zoned industrial, and that allows for more noise than people would probably like. But, and that's where they say they're afraid of a lawsuit because they're not going to shut them down over noise. I mean, this is a, and I want the county to help, certainly, but I just want to be very blunt, that if you don't get DEP to do something, the problem's not going away.
Exactly.
And it's very frustrating, I know, because, you know, unless you know the governor, I don't know.
No, I don't.
Who can pull the strings there?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
All right.
Any other public comment? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
No comments.
Commissioner Robach?
One thing, I've noticed there's a lot more pedestrian traffic on Third Street with the new Beacon dorms that they opened last spring, but now kind of fall school has started. Get a lot of students crossing, kind of in the Second Street area. We'd probably need like some sort of crosswalk pedestrian sign there to, maybe the students would use the crosswalk and the motorists would stop, would be good. New neighborhood signs going up, I think they look great. A lot of good feedback on those. And then this weekend, we have, or, yeah, this weekend and then next week have two great events coming up downtown. On Saturday, the sixteenth, is Barbecue Blues and Brews, and that's put on, I believe, by the DLBA. And then on the nineteenth, which would be Tuesday, is Taste of Lake, which is put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and both of those are right downtown, I think, by six to nine. That's it.
Commissioner Hurley?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the financial department for their audit results. It was another excellent year. We've been getting awards and honors from them for quite a while, so you keep it up, and it shows. It really does. You guys do a great job. About two months ago, I requested a cleanup in Veterans Garden of the lake around the edges. One of the boating clubs wants to, this is a model boating club, wants to sail boats in there and are willing to teach kids and anybody that's walking through or anything else. So if I can get the circumference of, you know, around there just cleaned up a little bit, they understand there's alligators in there, and they just think that they'd be able to get more people to do that because of the fact that they don't have to get through gates and everything else. And speaking of Veterans Park, what is the status of the Van Beck Memorial?
Do you?
Yeah, we ordered the monument. I think it's still maybe three, four weeks out.
Okay.
Having it carved.
Yeah, once that's done, we'll get in touch with everybody, and we'll have a little dedication.
Okay.
I don't know if dedication is the right word, but memorial ceremony for it.
And as far as the Arlington Ridge, I'm not giving up on it. I have found somebody in Plantation who, you know, is losing sleep and everything else because of the grinding and the smoke and everything else. So we'll try attacking it from the county, you know, see what we can do. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, have one. DC, can we reach out to DOT? I've had, actually, now I've had three calls of people complaining about getting some of the intersections cleaned up, and there's a couple specific ones I can get with you, but like, just a lot of trash, cigarette butts and stuff where people stand and panhandle and just, I don't know that, I mean, it's all on four forty-one, so I'm assuming that's all DOT and not us, or is that us?
Actually, April first, it is us.
DC, can you get the road cleaned? Thank you.
Mayor Christian?
We're proud tonight. We're moving forth on the community center to add another, I think, centerpiece to our city. Also, I got an email from Johnny from the partnership talking about HB Bill Nine coming for the House and Ways Committee on March twelfth, talking about CRAs and phasing them out by two thousand thirty-nine. Any new CRA after October twenty, two thousand nineteen has to have a county-wide referendum as opposed to just a county commission voting. So I want to know, to talk about tonight, a little tonight, as how the commission feels about CRAs. Do we need to continue? Should we oppose this bill? Of course, my thinking is that, I think our CRAs have done very well for us in Leesburg, and I think that's something that's talked to Al about it, so he wants us to have a little talk about discussions, give him some direction on which way he should be going. So anybody have any plus, minus?
I think the CRAs in Leesburg have done very well for the city. I know they were, they were fighting the CRAs and whatnot in the state. However, these are, these are cities and towns that have not exactly been following the rules. So this is a case of everybody's going to get punished. But I would like to see the CRAs in Leesburg stick around because they are doing a lot of good work.
You know?
So I would just, I agree. I'm a big proponent of CRAs. That being said, I think the first thing is, because we already have them, we would be able to keep extending ours. We couldn't set up new ones. But we're actually probably okay.
Okay.
Unlike other cities. And the, the second part of that is, is I just, I think this commission, while we, I'm sure, have individually taken stances on state issues, and the League of Cities is certainly going to be aggressively going after this and having Commissioner Dennison on that, I think we get a, and the state board gives us a good, good voice. I think it's a good policy for us as a board to mostly stay out of state issues unless they directly affect Leesburg. Because you just end up, you know, you know how it works in Tallahassee, they're going to vote the way they're going to vote, regardless of what we say, on a big issue like that. But on a local issue, we might need them, and they might remember, well, they were getting involved in this. So that would be, I would just, I think it would be appropriate for us to individually push for this issue, but maybe not as a board.
You know, it's amazing, the people in Tallahassee, the representatives are there to pass a balanced budget. That's the only thing that they have responsibility for. They've already put in over three thousand bills that they want to see passed this legislative session, yet they still haven't done a balanced budget.